Councilmember Lublin, Councilmember Ambrose, Councilmember Locke, Councilmember Osnick, Mayor Pro Tem Woods, Mayor Ackley. We do have a special guest as well, County Commissioner Smiley, thank you. Madam Mayor, I'll turn the meeting over to you, please.
I thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone. And at this time, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll remain standing, Mayor Pro Tem Woods will now give the invocation.
Dear God, we ask you to preside over this meeting tonight. Help us to act as a unified team to open our hearts, make fair and just decisions that improve our community. Also, may we come together as a whole with the courage and strength to show kindness and compassion as we collectively work towards the betterment of Wald Lake. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Ackley.
Here.
Ambrose.
Here.
Fernandez.
Here.
Locke.
Here.
Lublin.
Here.
Osnick.
Here.
Woods.
Here.
Thank you.
We do have a forum. Are there any requests for agenda changes? Or do you have any changes, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor, do not. Staff, are there anything, items to add? City Manager? No, sir?
Anybody on council have anything they're wanting to? Okay. All righty, then, we will move right along into audience participation. I think there's somebody behind the podium, or a couple people, but I can't quite see them.
Those are our, those are our, those are our people. Fire chief and...
Don't be bashful. You can move where we can see you. Okay, nobody wants to speak up and give their opinion to the world? All righty, council reports.
Um, we need to...
Always skip over approval of the minutes.
Yeah, approval of the minutes, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, approval of minutes. I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with a change to page nine. Under that, if Madam Clerk could correct my comments for the House at Wald Lake Drive in Lad and say what an outstanding house it was and all the good work that they put in the front lawn. Appreciate it.
Yes, will do.
I'll support that.
Okay. We have a motion with an amendment and support. Anyone else have anything else? Roll call, please.
Fernandez.
Yes.
Locke.
Yes.
Lublin.
Yes.
Osnick.
Yes.
Woods.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Ackley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now I will ask for council comments. Mindy, do you have anything this evening?
Um, Parks and Rec did not meet this week, but that doesn't mean there's not great things going on in the community. We have, um, the, on June 25th is our first part, Party in the Park or Music in the Park at Hiram Sims. We're having Sound Station will be there. And then on the 21st, of course, we have the fireworks. And then we wanted to say thank you to everybody for a great Memorial Day parade.
Thank you.
I have a library report. We will be meeting this Friday. But just to pick up, uh, the last few months, we've been going over some policies, trying to clear up and clean up some of them. The Internet use policy, the supervision of children policy, the patron behavior policy. These are just sort of some, you know, internal workings. And also the Wald Lake Library Employee Conduct Expectations Policy. So, just making them more practical to current and things like that. Summer reading kickoff was today, and it was a huge success over at the farmer's market. There were over 150 visitors to the library. They had a bounce house and there's a Kona ice truck, and that's probably part of the, uh, the market program, Market Days as well. And, um, uh, we're just trying to figure out how to, with the IMLS, the Institute of Museum and Library Services is what the federal government has sort of taken away, and how is that going to be resupplied? We're figuring that out, looking for grants and trying to figure out methods to cover it. In the meantime, the library will run as it always has, and, and it's here for everyone. Mostly, you know, please come and use it. That's my report.
Thank you. Casey?
Um, only report I have is just a quick shout out to our amazing Parks and Rec team as, as they always do a tremendous job. The 2025, um, annual Memorial Day Parade was a fantastic success, as, as they always, always continue to do. Getting great coverage from Fox Two News with Marielle Lu being one of the, the members within the parade. So, just a nice shout out to them. A fantastic, fantastic event for the city of Wald Lake and look forward to next year's as well. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Tamara? Anything? Mr. Rosen?
Uh, Planning Commission Matt. We had, uh, we tabled an issue from DM Motors. They had a lot, lot conjoining, but we tabled it because there were some issues. Jason Gonzalez ended up saying that there was an issue with the turn radius, radii internally. So, we're, we're holding it off until the next month.
Okay. Mr. Woods?
Nothing to report.
No, nothing to report. Okay, the mayor's got a few things, and I don't have definite times unless the clerk has some times. I was called and asked to be at the River Church on Saturday. They thought 3:00, but they haven't confirmed that yet. Now, I did talk to RJ from the Civic Fund, and he said that he had been talking to the people there, and he thought it was going to be at 3:00. And he was waiting to get ahold of Jerry Millen, who I think is still in Japan, is he not?
I believe so.
I think so. Anyways, they thought they might use 3:00 as the kickoff for the weekend celebration and opening of the beer tent. But the mayor is going to be attending and saying a few words, I was told, because they are going to ring the bell, I was told 200 times, for the 200 years since Commerce Township formed and... But details to come, so I'm still waiting for the details. And I think that day Stonecrest is also having an open house. I think the farmhouse, the Foster Farmhouse is going to be open as well. Is it? Okay, you shaking your head, I don't know. I'm hearing these things and I'm trying to get confirmation. So, if you're downtown and late afternoon, kind of check these places out and you can see what's going on. But I'm almost 99% sure the bells are going to ring at 3:00. They might be up here, but I think the bells are going to ring at 3:00. So, it looks like a, a great weekend. The fireworks, the downtown festival, and the historic celebration of Commerce Township in Wald Lake. So, I hope as many people as can will turn out and it'll be a nice and peaceful event for everyone. So, that's all I have. Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I first request you approve to receive and file the consent agenda consisting of the written departmental and divisional statistical reports.
Locke will make that motion.
I'll support.
Okay, any comments? Roll call, please.
Locke.
Yes.
Lublin.
Yes.
Osnick.
Yes.
Woods.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Fernandez.
Yes.
Ackley.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the next item I had listed here has to do with the school property at 615 North Pontiac. Most of us see it from Maple Side, but it is fronted on North Pontiac. Mr. Thomas is not here because the information we thought would be available is not available. So, to speculate or bring him here to speculate about what's going to happen in the school property. It is on the agenda for Thursday. The agenda for the school property sale or the receipt is, is listed. So, by Thursday, we will know from all of the bidders who filed their response to a request for offers or whatever they captioned it. We'll know by Thursday, probably Thursday night. I may just go by to see, because whoever that is, we will be working very closely with that contractor, that developer, that owner. But we don't know that yet. We can speculate. A lot of people think they're in the running, but you don't know until the city council, a county commission, and/or a school board votes. You don't know until the votes are in. So, right now, they've got it listed for not accepting anything less than $900,000. Assuming that's some sort of a base figure and they get that. As I recall, they probably spent that much cleaning it up and tearing down the building that we tried to get sold and partner with. Whole new administration, whole new, I think, board members. So, you can't hold them accountable. I think they just want to distance themselves from it. But they're going to award, we believe. And I'll, I'll let each one of you know. We will let you know when that comes out, so it's legit, you know. But we need to know. I expect literally within the day that the superintendent would sign whatever agreement they approve and get it moving. So, we can see some activity this summer, most likely, very quickly. That said, um, let me touch on downtown. Downtown activity, we still don't have any news report on our engineering. We're going to know more about that tomorrow. He's in tomorrow, so I'll be meeting with him to discuss where we are in terms of moving ahead on improvements on that section. We did make some improvements outside of the scope of that section on the, the other side of Pontiac. So, you got a couple extra parking spots there in front of the salon. You take a look over there. We took out a tree that was pretty much gone, and we adjusted there on that side. So, as it comes out, we may not have to include that in any special assessment, but we did make some improvements there. So, swing by if you haven't picked up a couple of spots. Every spot downtown seems to be important these days. The next thing downtown is, as all of you know, the Civic Fund is, uh, is doing the downtown festival this year. It's becoming a festival. Civic Fund engaged with Mr. Kissigloo, Abe Kissigloo, and got approval to use the property. The Civic Fund did that, not the city. The city is supporting, in a support way, what's going on downtown, but it's a, it's a civic fund function in partnership with some of the businesses down there. He has fenced off the entire area, which includes, what, three parcels? I think, three parcels. Technically, three parcels. There used to be four that was on the other side of the road, but he's got three. And so that, if you go downtown now, you're going to see that it's fenced in. But it's fenced in, and it's a temporary fence. It's not the construction fence. We started getting calls instantly because they saw the bars going in the ground before they saw the snow fence. And they all got an attitude and enraged and all of that that comes. But to fence is to fence that in to control that site. So, we've left a few streets open. I don't know if the, where are you, chief? Police chief? Come up and tell them what kind of, we're going to try to do this year. We left sites open so other businesses can participate. Let's say the Wald Lake Tavern, Tiki Bar, they're going to be there. Any of those businesses that think they can make money, we're like not away from there. We're supporting. Civic Fund will have a, a beer tent. Give us an update on traffic flow and, and what we think is going to happen that's a little different than in the past.
So, the Civic Fund put in to have a beer tent on Saturday on what we would consider the gravel portion or the, the westerly portion of Mr. Kissigloo's property. So, it'll be set up there with, I think they got a food truck and that, but that's all enclosed there. As far as street closure, Wald Lake Drive from Liberty to Withersall will close at 7:00 AM and will remain closed until the fireworks are over or until the street is clear. Furland will also be closed. That is a one-way, so that's pretty simple. Last year, we closed all of Wald, Wald Lake Drive to Pontiac Trail, closed a lane on Pontiac Trail each way and Liberty. We're not doing that. That's, uh, a lot more work and a lot, a lot more difficult to contain. So, Civic Fund, by them moving down to Mr. Kissigloo's property is a big savings for us, and it'd be a lot easier to control. But though that section will close, we also, I believe, have some, um, some no parking issues along the lake. We will sign one side of the street. Will be no parking, so that way we can make sure we can get our fire trucks through, get our emergency responders when we need to.
Essentially, it's going to look different than it ever has, the evolution of things, but it, this year, it's the fireworks and it's the Civic Fund. And the other businesses downtown have felt like they contribute. Some of them are contributing a lot more than others. Some are contributing no, nothing. So, we expect it to still be a good event and well-attended. So, that's all I got, thanks, chief. That's all I got on that. Quick update on the different projects we got downtown. Nothing new to report. Sorry, Mayor, had a cough. We got nothing new to report on Starbucks. They're, you know, kind of ghosting us. We haven't heard much, but that's a slow process. The other process across the road here at Speedway and... So, they're not in 7-Eleven. They're moving along very slowly, but they're moving. They got engineering things to work out, and that's coming along. So, we don't know when we'll be able to give you more than that as an update. The, uh... The, the case that, that Councilmember Osnick mentioned at planning, if you recall, the site, uh, be, be at DM Motors was a internet sales site when it was approved. There would be no cars there more than a few minutes, and they would be picked up. And now it's turned into, that whole area's been purchased. They're going to turn it all in to... And that's okay, that's, that's a good thing in some ways. But they're coming to looking to do something and looking for the police to do the enforcement so they can unload, but they have no place to unload on site because they have too many cars, and that's how they went away. We explained it to them from that, that... And I said that night to the owners that our policemen weren't going to do that, weren't writing tickets to... So, but it turns out not to be exactly that. They've written four tickets all on their own without any direction because they're so egregious. They just stop wherever they want and block traffic and, and all that. But the real problem is, if you go up there, if you go, probably if you went right now, they got a car and every, every inch is covered up with cars. And there is a place to put them, as we said, because they, when they painted the, redid the driveways and redid the asphalt, they moved them somewhere. So, they have a place somewhere else. And so, they don't have to all be right there, but they want to take a shortcut, and then they want the, the traffic to be interfered with. So, I'm not real sympathetic to their cause, but I am sympathetic to getting it right and letting them make some money. But they got to work with us, and they got to not mess with traffic and cause a, a problem for the city. So, that's where we are. That, that could be a big complaint that you've had. Other than that, I think, I, I've given you everything we need to know tonight. We need to get a few things out of the way. It's a pretty big issue for us. So, that's all I've got, as terms of my report.
Thank you. Okay, correspondence is next item on the agenda?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Attorney's report?
Uh, I have no report. All is good.
All is good?
That's a good thing.
That's good.
No problems.
When the attorney has no report, we're in good shape. How about unfinished business? The fire chief's employment agreement.
Our chief is here in the back, nervously anticipating your vote on the resolution. Hopefully, you've all got a look at it. His contract is essentially our standard template with an adjustment to, to, uh, for, because he's the fire chief. But again, he's an administrative employee, administrative officer under our rules, so we're recommending that you approve his contract. He's been traveling on those, essentially the same benefits since he was appointed and almost a year ago, August. But he's been traveling under the old premises of how we did it. So, this contract gives him a little more security, keeps him here a little bit longer. And I'm recommending you approve his, the resolution and his contract tonight.
Okay. How does council feel about this?
Osnick will make the resolution approving the employment agreement with Jason Gonzalez and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. This being proposed Resolution 25, 2025-11.
Woods, a second.
Okay, any comments? Okay.
I have a que, I have a question. So, um, we negotiated it back in September. And, right, is that true? Or can I get a timeline?
On what?
On when we brought him on and when he...
When I, I, well, he, first of all, he was traveling under the old contract with the union. And so, the benefits are essentially the same for retirement and all that. We were trying to get him moved into a different retirement program, which was more administrative. But we, that had been closed out, and it became much more complicated than it needed to be. And we also found that if he did that, there's a good chance that he would actually lose benefits because they would recalculate from his time and all that. So, what you have in, in, you know, the, the, his retirement with MERS is under a different group than mine or the police chief, but it's the same group he's always been in. And so, he's good with that. That was, that was kind of the hang-up. But the rest, the other stuff is, is he's got those benefits. He's accruing those, and he hasn't really lost much. Once this is signed, he'll be a happy man, I think.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I guess we're all set for a vote.
Lublin.
Yes.
Osnick.
Yes.
Woods.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Fernandez.
Yes.
Locke.
Yes.
Uh, Ackley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
You can say a few words, uh, you know.
Come on up. Come on.
Contract.
Operative, operative phrases a few.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for voting yes. That's my few.
Good enough.
All right.
And a few words.
We got an open house coming up and all of that. If you saw it Saturday, uh, they were out there. What were you doing, testing the barbecue this morning?
No, that's a...
I went by, it was like a smoke. It was a, I thought I was going to call the Wolverine Fire Department.
It's a live-fire flashover training simulator that, that we, that training that we do that, so it does live-fire simulations. So, it's a little like dollhouse that you can actually set on fire.
That's what that was?
Yep, we can actually make it flashover, do back drafts. You can do, show, show the flow path. You can open up different windows, different, um, you know, roof openings and see what happens to the, to the fire and how it progresses. And then you can even use spray bottles, like hose trains, so they can, it, it shows the different, you know, if you tack the fire here, what happens. They'll push it over here or whatever. And then you can also train with our thermal imagers. All our firefighters have a personal thermal imager. And so, it's really good thermal imaging training. So, that's what that training was. We did that this morning and this evening for firefighters.
They're cooking today, it's at 8:00.
City Manager.
Very useful.
And you thought it was a barbecue fire.
I, I've called the Wolverine Fire Department to come over and put that out.
Okay. Enough of that. Moving on to new business. It looks like we have a Resolution 2025-12, levy for taxes for fiscal year, July 1st of 2025 to June 30th, 2026.
Lublin will make the motion, and then we can discuss it. A resolution adopting the operating and capital budget appropriation of funds and levy of taxes for fiscal year, July 1, 2025 to June 30th, 2026, that being proposed Resolution 2025-12. And I know Chelsea is waiting to give us the scoop. It's just the balancing, it's the balancing amendment.
Okay.
To, to the year. Is that correct?
Yes, everything that was presented at the public hearing is exactly the same that was discussed through the budget workshop. So, if there's any more specific questions that I can answer, it's just that time.
First of all, do we have a second? Because I didn't hear it.
Woods, a second.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can go ahead with our discussion. Mr. Bennett just jumped the gun there a little bit.
You know what? I, I made a mistake. This is not the amendment, sort of cleaning that up. This is the new budget.
The amendment is later because...
I was getting all excited.
You should be excited about this budget.
This is exciting.
It should be just as exciting. Just as exciting.
It's a very, it's balanced, and we keep saving the money before we spend the money, and we're doing, we're doing it right.
Okay, anyone else have any comments or questions? I guess we're ready for another roll call.
Osnick.
Yes.
Woods.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Fernandez.
Yes.
Locke.
Yes.
Lublin.
Yes.
Ackley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is Resolution 2025-13 regarding the delinquent property taxes.
Osnick will make the motion. A resolution of the city of Wald Lake authorizing the transfer of the 2024 Delinquent Property Transfer Affidavit fees to be placed on the 2025 July, city of Wald Lake tax roll. It's being Resolution 2025-13.
Lublin supports.
Okay, we have a motion, we have support. Any comments or questions?
This is pretty much pro forma, like we've done every year for the past 15.
Is that all it's been? I thought you'd been here longer than that. I won't go on any other comments on how long somebody's been here. Okay, uh, no other comments? Okay, roll call.
Woods.
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osneck?
Yes.
Ackley?
Here.
Thank you.
Yes, I meant...
I gotcha.
I am here, but yes.
Okay. Now, we're on 2025-14 Oakland County Equalization Division Assistance.
Osneck will make the recommendation of a resolution to the City of Council of the City of Waldeke authorizing the agreement with Oakland County Equalization for Assessing Services for the years 2025-20 through 2028. This being Resolution 2025-14.
I'll support that, but I'm not in favor of it. So, but let's go where we need to go.
Now, we can go into discussion.
I think we all have our...
Now, we can discuss it.
As long as I mentioned it, the... There's a dramatic increase in the costs. And, you know, it doesn't have to be that way. I don't know where... What the county's thinking on how they're coming up with their increases. It's, you know, sixty... An average of sixty, seventy percent increase. And if we have a better way to do it, and I believe we do, then...
As this became known to some of the council, I won't reveal who was waking me up in the middle of the night cursing out loud. We did some work. And so, should this not pass, or if you wanted to go another route, we are prepared to go another route. We're prepared to let you vote on another route tonight if you choose to do that. If this passes, or there's several ways you can do it. We have another resolution. We have another provider, if you will. And I would like to thank Ms. Pesta for working with me to get it done. I would... I wish you were calling her on the weekends instead of me, but hey, you know. So, give us an update on what we've done because the mayor woke me up six times, you know.
Well, no, the mayor is just totally appalled at this whole situation. I think I'm more upset about it than Mr. Lublin is.
Not everybody on the county commission supported this. And so, since our county commissioner is here, I would call him out and let him come up and speak to that. He did not support it. You feel like you're good with coming up and telling them?
As long as you didn't support it, you can come up. Otherwise, I can't be assured you won't get some arrows your direction.
Yeah. Councilman Ambrose and Councilwoman Fernandez can verify that.
Well, I realize that's part of the job sometimes. It takes some slings and arrows. But, no, I did not support this. First of all, you know, hello, Ms. Mayor Ackley and council. It's good to see you all. And, you know, City Manager Witt and your staff, you know, it's a nice night to be out and to see you all. Yeah, I'll... I came kind of at the request of council. And, you know, just to kind of give you some insights, some of it you may already know or, you know, or you don't care why, but here's what happened. So, this is, you know, back in April and then on May 1st was when the vote was finally made, you know, to, you know, to do this assessment, to make these, this big increase. It was a very narrow vote. There was a lot of back and forth, a couple of shenanigans. But in the end, the... Those who wanted this increase, you know, got what they wanted. I think the vote was eight... Ten to either eight or nine. I think there was some... There might have been someone missing. But they needed ten votes and they worked really hard, I guess, to get it. But leading up to that vote, there was a lot of, you know, there were some great cases made by commissioners like myself, by several municipalities. There's thirty-two, you know, municipalities that, you know, count on the county for these, you know, assessment services. They weren't all there, but many of them came or they wrote in. I know, you know, councilperson, you know, Fernandez, Woods, and Ambrose were there. Forgive me if someone else is there. I might have forgotten, but I think that was, you know... So, you were well represented there. Some of the points that were made, this is short, but just so, again, in the interest of giving you kind of a recap, the points that were made by these folks were, you know, that it was proposed with, you know, very little prior notice or consultation or collaboration. That was a big, you know, kerfuffle with a lot of the municipalities and the leaders of the communities that, you know, they didn't see this coming. No one talked to them about it. And it hit them, you know, like you know, like a ton of bricks. They figure... They, you know, a lot of people made the case that it'll cause further strain on local budgets, of course, compromise critical public services. Proposed cost increases have been poorly communicated with a short notice. Some felt a very flawed methodology for apportioning this indirect cost was applied. It creates long-term uncertainty. And, you know, kind of to what you're alluding to already, you know, if because of the ill will, everyone or many of the communities leave the, you know, the county services, where's that gonna put what happened, you know? So, my big point was, and this kind of wraps it up in a nice, simple way, is that, you know, the county's been essentially subsidizing these costs for fifty-plus years. How about we just do one more year to let people kind of absorb this and deal with it rather than have it just fall in their lap right in the middle of budget season? And some budgets were done. Some budgets were just in the middle of being, you know, on their way to being completed. And there wasn't time to go find somebody or, you know, not as much time as you'd like to go find your own options. I'm excited that you may have found some. I'll be interested to hear all that. As you know, some of them were, you know, some of the increases were, you know, two-hundred percent, you know, I mean, double or in some cases more. The reason it's not a hard fact is some of the communities were being charged more than others or less than others. I can't explain why that's the case, but that's being corrected in this fix. One more thing. I wanted to make sure I said... Shoot, it left my head though. It was kind of in defense of things a little bit. Oh, none of the communities that, you know, were hurt by this were complaining about the actual costs, you know? They understood, you know, to a fault. They were wonderful about it, yourselves included, that, hey, they understand it. It's cost more. We've had a good deal for a long time. No one was unwilling to deal with or pay more for this, you know, for what they were getting. It was just, give us some time to absorb this and deal with it. And it seemed very reasonable, very fair. And why we couldn't find some way to just give folks more time to absorb all this, I still don't have an answer to. And so, I'm sorry I can't offer the explanation there. That's pretty much what I wanted to let you all know. If you got any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer. And so, there you go.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, you're very welcome. My pleasure.
Thank you very much. He just repeated almost everything I got from my own council members. You know, how did that happen? Why weren't we advised ahead of time? How was that busted out on us so quickly? Some people think that the cost is too much, too quick, that kind of thing. So, but they're all, you know, all the votes are there. They got... They did it right. It's not illegal. They can do that. But we can make an adjustment. And it looks like some adjustment might be made this very night. You came to the right... At the right time. So, with that, I'm gonna have... Miranda, do you have some resolutions? Assuming you want to see that because...
Don't we need to vote on this?
You don't need to. You can... There's several ways you can do this, but I want you to see the new resolution. There's no reason why the county commissioner can't know who we might do building business with. So, somehow, some way, before the night's over, you're gonna either vote that down and vote this in or vote this in. So, there's several ways to do it to create the record.
One more little thing I'll inject if I'm sure you'd be interested. You know, if you decide to go your own way, you won't be the only community doing that. I... Just in my district, I know Commerce wants to cut ties very seriously with Oakland County.
They did already. I'm not sure, but I think that Commerce signed already. They cut ties.
They did.
Yeah, they're already done.
Yeah. And Wix, somebody I know is looking at it too.
And the reason we know that is because we're working with the same folks.
Oh, excellent. All right. Very good. Okay, I'm gonna sit.
Miranda, you got an extra one to give the commissioner?
Yeah.
Yes. Here. You got one here. You can take this.
Just the resolution.
If you get a minute to look at that, while you're looking at it, I'm gonna have Ms. Pesta give you the background on our negotiating with the group. And I appreciate those of you who were angered by the late notice and... You gave him the right one?
Yeah.
Which one did I give him?
Exhibit.
Oh, that's different. Chelsea, will you please give this city council and the commissioner an update on how we got that other than the late calls that the mayor was making, trashing me? But I got her an option, so let's see.
Lots of persistence from the city administration here to get a callback. So, we were in discussions with a assessing company called Assessment Administrative LLC. They are based out of Macomb County. As of recently, they have transitioned six of the thirty-two communities that were partnered with Oakland County.
Six?
Six. So, as of now, they're working with Commerce Township, Ferndale, Madison Heights, Township of Oakland, Orion, and Oxford. And we would be one of the finals that they would take this first year. Obviously, almost all thirty-two communities have reached out to them. We're lucky enough to be small enough that they wouldn't be overburdened. And with them partnering with Commerce Township, it would actually be a benefit to us because we do have some unique situations in our tax system where we have half a parcel in Commerce and a half a parcel in Waldeke. And now, we would have one designated person to both areas and not having to deal with two separate assessors at this point, which is what we've been doing in the past. They have come in with a contract that would end up actually saving the current budget sixty-two and a half percent. So, we are making the recommendation for you to substitute this resolution in place of the current that was on the agenda tonight from Oakland County to go with Assessment Administrative LLC. They are ready to start as of July 1st, so there would be no missing for the tax year of 2025. So, they are ready to go. They already work with the county system and the citrix that we use. So, it's just a matter of getting some information from the county to keep everything moving through the rest of this tax year.
Very good. So, all we need to do is just...
Mayor, I'm gonna... Mayor, if you bear with me, I'd ask the clerk to read that resolution into the record. And if you want to do it this way, I would suggest that somebody make a motion to substitute, which means we got a motion on the floor. You're substituting this resolution for the other resolution. You need a second. And then you vote on that. And if that passes, then you're gonna pass, vote on the main motion. So, we're not out of whack. But you can do it by substitution. Another way, an easier way sometimes is just vote no on the county resolution and vote to pass the other resolution, either way. I like the substitution aspect because it creates a record to show the discussion was had on the other one and the substitution was made. And it sends a different signal to those who might look at it. And I think the commissioner will probably go back and tell them, well, that was creative, wasn't it? Could you read that? Can I get you the...
Yeah, we already made the motion.
Well, I'll go along with what the council wants, but I'd like to send a definite message to Oakland County that we are a definite no against this. I think it's a bunch of highway robbery. It was fine when they came in and they took our own assessor away from us. They explained to us what a great deal it was. We had a personal assessor that was here in town and could take fair things. And yeah, this mayor went back to that time. I don't even think John was on council at that time.
No.
I was against it. We've been here a long time, but the mayor's going on forty-six years here. So, you know, we had an assessor who came into City Hall every day, took messages. He was out in the community. And the county convinced us this was a great way to go. Well, now, they're wanting to give us an eighty-five percent increase. They're wanting to, you know, build a new executive building, move something else. And, you know, all they're wanting to do is spend money and raise the cost to us. And...
And they are.
And they're trying to, and they are. I know a vote no tonight on their contract's not gonna stop them spending forty-three million dollars, but I guess if that's what they're gonna do and the rest of the county wants to do it with them, that's... We can't stop that. But we can stop this proposal definitely.
If you send them the signal. We already have a motion to substitute.
I understand that. But I would like to see a definite no on their motion, not a motion to substitute. Tell them flat out, no.
That works.
And then we'll have... Then we'll have our own motion.
Okay.
We're gonna put all this in the minutes too, Mayor. That works.
It's about time the Oakland County Commissioners started listening to their people again. They have gotten totally out of hand and they do whatever they want to over in Pontiac, and I'm tired of paying for it. That's... I'll shut up now. You do what you want to do.
Well, we can vote on the original motion, right?
You, if you withdraw your motion, you need to vote. And if it passes, they got a contract. If it fails, then the record will show that you had a lot of discussion. And we will get this in the record. And the minutes will show that this discussion, and it'll show just how pissed the mayor was.
We have a motion on the original. We have a second on the original.
All you gotta do is vote.
Vote of no means that you do not want this to...
That's what it means.
Okay. And then we can do a substitution.
And if you want it, we're gonna put it on the headlines of the local Waldeke paper.
All right. I think we're ready for that vote.
Ambrose?
Pardon me? Who did you... I didn't hear who you called.
Okay.
Okay. Now, let me get this right.
Resolution 2025-14, the original resolution is what we are voting on now.
Is a double no.
Okay. Well, I'll get there. Okay. Ambrose?
No.
Fernandez?
Heck, no.
Locke?
No.
Lublin?
No.
Osneck?
Heck, no.
Woods?
Absolutely no.
Ackley?
No, no.
No, no. Okay. Resolution failed. Now, do you want to do your substitute resolution?
Yes.
That's correct.
So, this will be substitute Resolution 2024... Oops, excuse me.
Twenty twenty-five dash fifteen.
And who will?
I'll read that into the... I'll read that into the record.
Yeah.
A resolution of the City Council of Waldeke authorizing not to renew the agreement with Oakland County Equalization for Assessing Services for the years 2025 through 2028 and to switch to Assessment Administration LLC to ensure fiscal responsibility. This being Resolution 2025-15. It was already seconded by Locke.
Is there any discussion or may I do a roll call vote?
So, the only thing I wanted to say is so that by reducing it sixty-two point five percent, which is what is in this, the total's gonna be sixty-eight thousand instead of last year fifty-nine, which is not a terrible increase. And then also, I think the offices of the Assessment Administration LLC is over at Commerce Township.
Yes, that's what she said earlier.
That's right.
It is. They're close.
Right next to us.
It works. It works well for us.
That's right.
We won't have to pay for gas mileage now.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osneck?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are you sure, Mayor?
What was that?
Are you sure?
I'm double sure.
No.
I'm not sure about the rest of my packet here. I got it so mixed up. Okay. No, I have that, I think. No, I guess maybe I don't. Yes, I do. Okay. It looks like we're onto item number four?
Four.
The budget amendment. Well, it's not gonna be twenty-five... Twenty twenty-five fifteen or twenty twenty-five sixteen now. Okay. What's council want to do with this one?
Ah, now you're gonna find it.
I know. We got too many papers here all of a sudden.
Woods will make the motion to approve the resolution amending fiscal year 2024-25 to reflect increased revenue from interest earned and corresponding increases in expenditures for public safety, personnel costs, and purchases.
Lublin supports.
Resolution 2025-16.
Okay. We have a motion. We have support.
We need some discussion. Ms. Pesta, does that include the...
Yes, sir.
Does that include the DDA adjustment?
It also does include the DDA. That was approved at the last meeting.
Again, let me give you an update on DDA. That's where I intended to give the update on DDA. DDA, they spent some money for the sidewalks downtown. We did that, which wasn't budgeted in their budget, but that means they picked up the cost. So, they do that. But you also approved their budget, so we adjust our budget because they approved it. Having said that, there's gonna be a big adjustment if things go right. The GDA has discussions about, you know, doing more downtown. And that includes instructing me as the executive director begin negotiations with purchasing of the property across from the beach. That is feasible through the DDA. It's feasible through the city council and/or both, okay? The DDA has about two and a half million dollars, more or less, depending on the final bills that come in. They have the money. We have the money to buy that property as a DDA. You have the money to buy it as a city or both. Those discussions began. We're not in a position to be able to talk about that, but that would be one of the reasons Mr. Kissiglu was accommodating the civic fund. So, after this weekend, we'll be sitting down with them as early as possible to work out the deal and see if that's really gonna fly. So, but we... You do have the ability to buy that. The DDA does. If they acquire the use of it, then it becomes theirs to use as they might want to do it. It could turn into a park, a parking lot. It could be a public-private partnership, a development. But it's no longer controlled by outsiders who always get silly about what they're gonna do there. So, we are in a position to purchase that because the DDA seemed to support it. Hypothetically, they could without a vote of council. They might argue that. My vote there would be that they still need council's approval because it would take a budget amendment to do that.
They still need council's approval.
Huh?
They still need council.
Yeah, because of the budget, so whatever. But a lot of DDA's think that they don't need council's approval. So, but you need to give that some thought. Is it time? And it very well could be that we go ahead and purchase that and control it as a city and the DDA. Because it's not going anywhere. It's been sitting there for, well, I know fifteen years since I've been here. They've done nothing with it. There are three parcels left. It looks like one side, but it's three parcels. I'm aware that we're... left. It looks like one side, but it's three parcels. I'm aware that we're losing, we're paying, we're receiving from him a couple thousand dollars on each parcel, except for the littlest one was cheap. So we're getting about $8,000.
About $8,000 a year between all three parcels.
So the discussion about what money you lose if the DDA bought it or whatever that's off the tax rolls. So you're losing $8,000 a year in revenue. But you could put it to work for the city or the DDA to recover that revenue, you know, and then you're breaking even. You don't ever lose the price or the cost of the property. So this could be the time, after all of these different things, this could be the time for the city to think outside the box, if you will, and support the DDA and purchase the property and then begin to decide what you can do with it. $8,000, about $8,000, you know, going all the way back, like five years backwards. But Mr. Kissiglu's been paying that $8,000 or whatever it was 15 years ago. I don't recall. I didn't go that far back. But he's willing to do that, but the price is the same. I mean, he's losing money, but I think he wants to let it go now, you know? The developing of it is not worth, the way they're trying to do it, it's not going to work. So it's really time to think about it as a council and as a DDA board to purchase that and then begin to develop it in some way that's useful to everybody's liking. So that's all I got to say about that resolution, and I need your vote.
Council have anything to say? Or are we ready to vote? I think it's pretty much been said. Okay, let's take a roll call.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osnick?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Eckley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is 2025-17, notary services fee proposal.
This resolution would be a policy of the city. It becomes necessary because the front office has been overwhelmed by people from outside the city coming here to get things noted because we don't charge. The other communities do, so we're getting them from every surrounding community. And they don't just come in with one. They'll come in with the different things.
Of course.
So the ladies at the front office are sitting up there, you know, all day long. So we're simply, okay, if we're going to do that, we need to recover some of those fees. But we've been good with our city residents. But now they're getting sent here from other communities. They go over there, they do it for free. And I think the maximum we're allowed to charge is 10 bucks. But we need to start controlling that. Otherwise, they're at the counter all day long notarizing things that we have nothing to do with. The city has nothing to do with.
So why is it only $10? Why can't...
State statute limits how much you can charge.
That's it?
Yep.
That's it.
Not 11?
Maybe here 15?
Probably hasn't been updated.
Well, everything's got a statute. You know, if you chase it, it's not just in Michigan. Anywhere you go. So in Michigan notary law, they have a law about what you can do and what you can't do. Some people don't, they, people come in and get, you know, like a snapshot notarized. It doesn't do anything, but they want that raised seal. You know, if you go to other places, that raised seal with that gold leaf on there, it means something. Really doesn't. But there are cases where you really need something notarized. And those people, I think real estate people, probably mostly real estate people are coming in. But the citizens, we don't mind, but they usually come in with one thing. What's the most any one person ever came in with? Several.
30 documents.
30 documents?
Yes.
Wow.
So you're sitting there 30 times.
It took over an hour.
It takes, you know, 20, 30 minutes minimum.
Yeah, we...
Time is money.
And it was a lot of...
Well, if they were paying 10 bucks for each one of those, I bet you they wouldn't have brought 30, you know? So this is the beginning of trying to get that under control. That's all.
Do you know...
Did I cover that right?
Is the county charging now? Because they didn't used to either.
I do not know the county status at this point.
I don't know what they're doing. I know they didn't used to.
Everyone in the area that I looked at does charge, but I didn't go as far as the county.
The mayor signed for free for many years.
Did we have a motion on this yet?
I don't believe so.
Not yet.
Then Osnick will make the motion, a resolution establishing fees for notary services for residents and non-residents. This being Resolution 2025-17.
Locke will second that.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments or questions regarding this?
One comment. It is $10 at the county of Oakland.
It is $10, huh?
It is $10.
Thank you, sir.
It was fast.
And that's for everyone.
That's for everyone, resident or not.
Okay. Well, at least we'll give the residents a break.
Guess it does.
Does anybody else have any tidbits of information?
I do. I'd like to congratulate all the candidates who were...
Are we going to vote on this first?
No, you're not going to vote on it. I just want you to know that the candidates are here. And I'm saying it out loud. I appreciate that they're all going to run. And this one, Fernandez?
What do you do now?
You can vote yes if you want, you know? Congrats. The team is happy about that.
Yes, we are.
You don't think this will cost us the election?
I totally meant that. I don't need your vote. I don't need, I got a contract. Truly, I truly hope that the team stays together. Oh, I know they will, but it's good to work with such a good group, you know? I've worked with some interesting groups in my time.
We are interesting.
Well, yeah, you are. That's a good interest.
We're interesting in a good way.
Roll call. Or it gets too deep in here. Okay. Lublin?
Yes.
Osnick?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Eckley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, council comments. Does anyone else want to do some padding here?
Osnick will make a comment just before the council.
You're out of turn.
I am. I am out of turn. But that's okay because I'm up for reelection.
You're changing the mayor's rotation, but go ahead.
Before the council meeting, I went around the lake, and it's looking really nice. It's very nice. It's part of what the civic fund is doing. I like to see how. And all of those parking spots are full right now. In fact, along Witherell, they had cars, they had even one that was up against a curb up towards Market. So, yeah, people are using the beach. It's very, very nice. And I'm just wondering, when is that new Mediterranean place going to open up? That's the only question that I have.
Working on it.
Yeah, it used to be the old Jennies.
There's still permits. They're working on it.
Are they open now?
No.
No.
Permits are actively being pulled, though, correct?
Yes.
Good. We like permits being pulled.
I'm done.
Okay, Mindy, would you like to follow that?
I don't know if I can follow that up, but thank you again for such a great Memorial Day parade. I mean, that is such a heartfelt event for people, especially if they stay toward the end and they go through the ceremony with the honor guard. Thank you to the honor guard. You guys always do a great job. I'm looking forward to seeing everybody downtown for the fireworks and for the Stonecrest History Walk.
Okay. Bennett?
Shout out to our DPW and Mr. Ladd for a great project down there on West Wald Lake Drive. The cement, the sidewalks, the curbs, the asphalt, just it really looks great. And I know that you were instrumental. I can't see you behind the podium there, but I know you're there. And always excited for fireworks, man. It's a great day to be in Wald Lake. It's a great time to be a part of the summer kickoff. Looking forward to it. Those were my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Ambrose?
I want to give a shout out to the tremendous ladies that we have in the office for specifically the assessing services. Being nimble, quick, and ready to jump into a totally different avenue. My dad's famous saying was, you don't have to be the fastest, you just have to be quicker than others. That's exactly what you ladies did, so thank you. Finally, also want to give a shout out to RJ Ron Johnson from our awesome, our awesome DDA. He is one of the chairmans of the Wald Lake Civic Fund. And the Civic Fund has grown to more than just an annual fireworks event. It truly does bring businesses that want to better this community together. And that is easily identifiable on their flyers. Those businesses that are on those flyers want to make this community better. They're willing to give money to make this community better. So the next time or this Saturday, when you're enjoying those fireworks, just take a look at those businesses. And when that Monday rolls around, think about where you're going to go to lunch or get your car repaired. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'd just like to echo my fellow council members and just say, I hope that everyone has a great time this weekend, but please be safe. Make it home safely. Our fireworks are some of the best.
And we'll skip over Mr. Osnick.
Well, she skipped over me last time.
Mayor Prokow?
No, I didn't. No, I 100% agree with everything that's been set up here between the administration, happy and not quick. The police and fire department, right? So I attended the firefighter funeral this past week. So between that and the memorial parade, the honor guard is amazing. The work they did in and out to make sure both events went smoothly is a true reflection of, you know, how good we have it here. So really appreciate that. Mayor, you did a great job during the Memorial Day ceremony in your speech. That was excellent. And then personal shout outs to my kids. My youngest graduated from elementary school.
Woo hoo!
My middle graduated from middle school. They're on to newer schools. So no more three schools in our family, so we're down to two, but we have more activities, so.
Yay.
Yes. And looking forward to the fireworks.
Great. I can only echo my fellow council members. I think being around Wald Lake as many years as I've had, it just continues to amaze me the good changes that are coming in town. And unfortunately, I was not able to make the funeral service, but I hear the honor guard was fantastic as they were out here in front of City Hall for Memorial Day. And it's always a pleasure for me to be able to give the Memorial Day speech. It means a lot to me. Brings back a lot of memories of when I stood in the crowd and watched those old people up there doing their thing on Memorial Day. And now I'm one of them. But I am going to take a stand up here. I did not, under no circumstances, steal Marielle's candy. I didn't do it.
She may have went on television and told everybody I did.
Put it in the record. Let it be known.
But Mr. Woods will know that I had five bags of candy. He helped me carry them, and that's what...
Yeah, my kid. You put my kid behind her.
That's what we passed out. Now, she was more than welcome to come and get some of it, but to tell everybody I stole a bag of her candy, that just didn't sound very good for the mayor to do. And I didn't do it. So I go on the record that I'm not guilty. I didn't steal her candy. But I do hope she comes back next year.
She is fantastic.
And if she does, I'll buy her her own bag of candy.
That sounds like a personal, personal issue, personal situation.
But anyways, everybody, everything's looking great. And I just hope we have a fantastic, safe weekend. And I'm looking forward to all the events. I'm not sure how I'm going to get to all of them, but I'll be there. Because I hope all of the rest of my council people are, and the city manager, and the staff. So anyways, that's all I have to say tonight. I appreciate all the council and staff's effort. And I think we did a good job tonight. And I think we made some good decisions for the city.
I would agree.
With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
A second. So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's go home.